Yeah, okay. We're gonna go ahead and open up the Planning Commission, Planning Commission Meeting for Tuesday, December the 3rd. It's 6:32 PM. My caller here will be leading the Pledge Allegiance. Thank you very much. Roll call.
Chairperson Ozeta.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Laborin.
Present.
Commissioner Perez.
Present.
Commissioner Prieto.
Present.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Present.
Report on posting. I, Kimberly Hernandez, Housing Assistant, certify that a true and correct copy of the foregoing meeting agenda was properly posted on November 27, 2024, 72 hours prior to the scheduled meeting as required by law. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by the Planning Commission is $125 per meeting. Item number one, conditional use permit. A request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow an upgrade of an ABC license type 20, off sale of beer and wine to a license type 21, off sale general, off sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits, including a new ancillary license type 86, instructional tasting license in conjunction with an existing large format retail department slash grocery store, Target, located at 5700 Firestone Boulevard, and finding the project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. The project does not include site or tenant improvements.
Staff?
Yeah, we are gonna have our senior planner give the presentation. He does have a PowerPoint presentation here that's set up, so when Rodrigo is ready he'll...
Thank you, Rodrigo.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. So this item before you is a conditional use permit 24-74. And the request, or this project involves a request for an upgrade of an ABC license. It's currently a type 20, which allows for off sale of beer and wine. And the applicant is requesting to upgrade their license to type 21 to allow for the off sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits. The applicant's also requesting an ancillary ABC license that would complement the type 21 license. And this type 86 license would allow for instructional tasting. This specific license is only allowed by ABC for certain operators, or in this case, a large retail department and grocery store. I forgot to mention, I should have started, the applicant is Beth Alvolafia, and this is on behalf of the Target Corporation. Here we have a vicinity map of the subject site. The site comprises a large parcel measuring approximately 14 and a half acres. And the parcel's located between the streets, or it's bounded by the streets of Garfield Avenue to the east, Firestone Boulevard to the north, and the 710 freeway off-ramp to the west. There's also a public utility easement on the southerly portion of the site. It's an open field with overhead utility lines. And the site's developed with a multi-tenant shopping center consisting of restaurant pad at the northeast corner of the site with a drive-through component and a primary or main building that spans across the southerly portion of the site. This building comprises of multiple tenants, including the applicant, in this case, is Target Corporation or the Target Retail Store. And it also has a grocery store adjacent to it, retail cellphone store, and a restaurant, a dine-in restaurant along the easterly side of the building. The northerly portion of the site consists of great level surface parking lot. The site also has parking areas behind the building along the southerly portion. Here we have a parcel map, just previously described the site with the site measuring approximately, a little over 14 and a half acres. Here are the existing conditions of the property. The image to the top is a view looking south from Firestone Boulevard toward the retail store and the parking lot. The image below is a view from the 710 off-ramp looking east toward the building and the joining parking lot. The image above is another view from the 710 off-ramp closer, looking at the backside of the building and the westerly corner of the site. On the bottom, you'll see an image which shows the intersection between Garfield Avenue and Firestone Boulevard looking into the site southwest. This is another image on the top which shows a view looking west from Garfield Avenue into the driveway entrance to the shopping center. The image on the bottom is another view from Garfield Avenue, looking at the back of the building facing the south. You can see the utility easement adjoining the property there. As mentioned, so this is a request for upgrade of alcohol license. And per the Southgate Municipal Code, Chapter 11.21.030, Table 11.21-4, alcoholic beverage sales are permitted within a retail store in conjunction with a large format retail store with the approval of a conditional use permit. There are three required findings per zoning code, which are listed below. The first finding, in order to approve a conditional use permit, is, requires the approval of the use permit, it's stated as approval of the CUP is consistent with and will not adversely affect the intent and purpose of this title or the city's general plan. The second finding is the design and development of the land use and conditions of the CUP are compatible with the existing and future land uses of the applicable zone. And the last finding that's required is approval of the CUP would not result in detrimental impacts to the adjacent properties or to the character or function of the neighborhood. So the applicant's current business hours are Monday through Sunday. They're open from 8:00 AM until 11:00 PM. However, their alcohol sales, since they currently have a CUP that allows for beer and wine, they're currently selling alcohol on Mondays through Saturdays from 8:00 AM until 10:00 PM, and then on Sundays from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. In this case, the project's a request for the upgrade of a ABC license from type 20 to type 21. And to remind you, type 21 would allow them to not only sell beer and wine, but distilled spirits or hard liquor, per se. And they're also requesting the ancillary license type 86, which would allow them for instructional tasting events within the existing retail store, which I'll get into further details. The applicant currently has some policies and protocols to ensure safety and making sure that the sales are all handled in a responsible manner to deter crime, loitering, and other undesirable activity. Some of the measures that they're currently taking and they're proposing to maintain as part of this request is that they have a 24-hour video surveillance system. They also have personnel monitoring the stores inside and outside, the exterior. And cashiers are also trained to prevent underage sales with methods of verifying identification, handling intoxicated customers, and other cashier liability. And lastly, they also have a point-of-sale system, which is programmed to prevent underage sales. It's programmed to prompt the cashiers whenever they're processing the alcohol transactions. As far as the ABC license type 86, the purpose of it, as mentioned, it allows for an off-sale license holder to permit an alcoholic beverage manufacturer representative to conduct tastings on the premises. These rules are specifically from California's Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. Another rule from ABC is that the tasting area must be separated from the rest of the store or premises by a wall, rope, or some sort of a barrier. Sinets also needs to be displayed to prohibit minors under 21 from entering this area for tasting. And then the license cannot be issued to licensees for off sale at locations with less than 5,000 square feet of interior retail space unless these locations have at least 75% of their total gross sales from alcoholic beverages. The tastings, they cannot have or not charge any fees or no sort of, yeah, no fees may be charged for tastings at an instructional event. Other rules from ABC include that the tasting events may only take place between 10:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Customers that are tasting may not leave the instructional tasting area with an open container of alcohol. And the tasting events shall be limited to a single type of alcoholic beverage. So they can't have a mix of hard liquor or wine or beer on a specific event. It must be one or the other. Wine, beer, or distilled spirits shall be limited to the products that are authorized to be sold by the type 86 license holder. In this case, that would be the applicant. Next, please. And then ABC also requires that no more than three tastings of distilled spirits or wine shall be provided to any person on any day. And the tastings cannot exceed, for distilled spirits, one quarter of one ounce, for wine, one ounce, and for beer tasting, a maximum of eight ounces per person per day. Here we have an example on the left of a standard shot glass, just for a visual representation of what that would look like. That far left, as you can see, quarter of an ounce. It's merely that bottom part of the shot glass. One ounce is represented there as well for wine. And then on the right, eight ounces would be approximately three quarters of a standard typical soda can, per se. And the eight ounce, again, to remind you, it's the limit for the day. On the left-hand side, it's the limit per tasting. And to remind you again, it's three tastings per person. Next slide, please. Here we have a site plan, which represents a project site. If you can move on to the next slide, please. This is a floor plan of the current store layout. It's color-coded just to give you a representation of the common departments. There's many more, but it's been generalized. So as you can see, there's a grocery store in the blue on the far right of the store, which is near the area, or the alcoholic beverage sales would take place within that vicinity. The tasting areas are actually represented with the dash circle in red, right below that blue rectangle that represents the grocery department. Here's a close-up of that location. That's, that area that's being represented, it's currently the alcohol section for the store. They currently sell the beer and wine. And on a specific tasting event, the applicant would cordon off a very small section at the end of the aisle, and they would hold or host a beer or any other alcohol manufacturer to, to hold these tasting events. Now, to give you an idea of what a tasting event would look like, it's very similar to other national grocery stores that sell food products, and they'll have like food samplings where it's just your, your stand at the end of an aisle, and they'll provide a very small sample. In this case, because it's alcohol, they'll have these measures that are pretty much set in place by ABC where they have to cordon off the alcohol area for these specific events. Now, as far as the scheduling for these tasting events, the applicant hasn't set a schedule for that, and the reason being is because Target, they're currently making efforts to obtain these licenses for many of their stores throughout the region. They currently have, excuse me, they have eight locations with an active type 86 license within the region, and they're pursuing an additional 25 licenses at other locations, which are currently in progress. So they're, part of their plan is to have a rollout, per se, so that they're implementing these events or taste instructional tasting comprehensively. The images before you represent the current site conditions within the store, specifically the area that would be utilized for the alcohol tastings. So currently, there's a few aisles that are designated for alcohol and the beer and wine. And if you can use a little bit of your imagination, there would be a cordon area, or area cordoned off just to designate those specific tasting events every once in a while. As far as off-street parking requirements, our zoning code would require 1,192 off-street parking spaces for the entire project site. This includes all the other land uses that are there within the shopping center. The site currently has 842, therefore, there's a deficiency in 432 parking spaces. However, this site is considered legal non-conforming, and it may continue to operate in the same fashion as long as it's not expanded or altered or modified by more than 10% in size. In this request or application, it's not going to involve any expansions, alterations, or any tenant improvements. It's simply an upgrade to their existing alcohol license. So the continued, the use is still legal non-conforming, and we continue, therefore, satisfies these parking requirements. This is a list of the other locations that Target already has type 86 licenses for. As mentioned, there's eight locations, two in Irvine, one in West Hills, one in El Monte, Lomita, Rancho Cucamonga, Redlands, and Menifee, and then there's 25 other applications that they have in process. Now, based on the California Environmental Quality Act, this project qualifies for a categorical exemption under Class 1, in that it's an existing facility, and their request in itself, it will not involve any expansion or alterations to the existing buildings within the project site. Pursuant to the Southgate Municipal Code, Section 11.52.030, the conditional use permit may be approved if the three required findings can be made. Staff has determined that with the recommended conditions of approval, the project will comply with the Southgate Municipal Code, and the required findings can be made in support of the project. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission find the project to be categorically exempt from CEQA, and to make the required findings and approve the application for conditional use permit 24-74, subject to the recommended conditions of approval, or any other conditions that the Planning Commission may wish to impose. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and we also have the applicant here, as they may be able to answer some more questions or provide some more details.
Thank you, Rodrigo. Would the applicant like to say a few words?
Good evening. I represent Target. I handle the alcohol beverage licensing for Target stores in California. And I was telling Rodrigo earlier, I would have been here 20 years ago when we got the permit for beer and wine sales for this store in 2005. Not sure what to make of that, but... So we have been selling beer and wine at this store for almost 20 years, since 2005. And since that time, Target's retail model, as well as other large general merchandise retailers, has changed, and in particular, to put more focus on groceries and develop a larger grocery component to its store. Target now has a very significant grocery section selling fresh fruits, meats, vegetables. And so, in conjunction with that grocery, grocery offerings, Target would like to also be able to offer customers the full array of alcoholic beverage products, beer, wine, and including distilled spirits for customers to purchase, you know, along with other items when they're shopping at Target. Probably, close to 95% of the Target stores in California are licensed and do sell the full array of alcoholic beverages in their grocery section, beer, wine, and distilled spirits. So it is, you know, we would like to bring the Southgate store into the model that Target currently has at the vast majority of its other stores in California. And so, that is the primary component of the request here. As staff mentioned, we are also requesting approval for a type 86 instructional tasting license. And that is something new to Target. Target, although that license type has been in existence for probably eight years or so, and, and it is a license that was created specifically to allow off-sale retailers, like grocery stores, Targets, Walmarts, Bevmo's, off-sale retailers, to be able to offer customers in some very, very regulated, within some very regulated parameters, offer customers the ability to taste products and learn about products by talking to the winemaker, the importer who is there pouring the taste. So it's a program that Target plans to start introducing in its stores in California, probably sometime second quarter next year. Right now, we are in the process of obtaining the appropriate licenses for this program, including, as staff mentioned, the eight or so stores that have already been issued type 86 licenses, and we have many more stores that are in the process of, application process for these licenses. So it has not yet been started in California, but the expectation is they will start doing it next year sometime. And as, as staff mentioned, the, the requirements and the restrictions and the parameters for how these tastings have to take place, it's very, very regulated per the ABC code. These are not, you know, discretionary guidelines. These are requirements of the license that, the, the requirements that Rodrigo listed, including that the tasting area be cordoned off while the tasting is taking place, no minors allowed in that area, no open containers of alcohol allowed to leave that area, limits on the quantity, size of the tastes, and so forth. But the idea is that it would allow Target to have suppliers, like winemakers or importers of wine, come to the store on an occasional basis to offer taste to customers of a particular product, and engage with the customer and talk about the product. And so that is, you know, that, that is what Target's hoping to do. The, as you saw on the floor plan, the area proposed for the tasting is going to be very small, probably not more than 50 or square feet. And so the idea is that there will be one or two people coming into that area at a time and engaging with the winemaker or the importer who is, you know, presenting their product. So it is not, you know, some large-scale type tasting. You know, I think this staff report was, was pretty thorough, just in terms of Target's overall security measures and protocols for handling alcohol sales in a responsible manner. But I would be happy to answer any specific questions that you might have. And the store director, Richie, Ricky Camacho, is also here, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your time.
Sure.
It's okay, we're gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment, and if, we'll circle back with you if you have any questions.
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone public comments at the moment? No? Okay. Any emails?
I received one email from Mr. Mario Dominguez. He begins by expressing that he is neutral about the decision the commissioners will make on a particular item. He raises some questions about Target's operations, specifically inquiring whether other Target stores sell alcohol and host tasting events or sampling, and if such activities occur in more affluent cities. Additionally, Dominguez makes a request for Target to consider contributing to consider contributing to the development of a splash pad at Southgate Park. He emphasizes that Southgate is a low-income community and that this contribution would significantly benefit the city, especially during the summer months. He asked the city attorney to include a condition in the contract requiring Target to consider this donation to the Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you. Uh, any additional public comments?
No other comments.
Great. Uh, we'll close the public comment section and I'll open it up to my colleagues for any questions. Or comments.
I do have a comment I did wanna disclose, and just for transparency. Um, and for the record, my, uh, my daughter is a part-time employee at Target, this Target here on Barstone in Southgate.
I had a couple of questions related to the security measures that are going to be taken. Um, I saw that the packet we were provided, um, kind of left those measures, um, open as something that the police would comment, the police department would comment on after, um, or if the, um, permit is issued. And, and I wanted to get a little more context on what kind of measures are typically, um, asked for by the police department, and, um, also if, if there's any additional information uh, on what measures Target will take. I know that, um, throughout the county, there has been a lot of, uh, smash-and-grab incidents. I've seen, I feel like I've seen maybe one or two thefts and, and take place at Target, just people walking out with stuff like that. So I don't know if, if there's anything else that will be, um, done to kind of make sure that these things don't happen, that the alcohol isn't more accessible. I know certain stores around the area have actually locked up a lot of the, the alcohol behind cases, and I'm, I'm curious to know whether that's something Target's gonna do. I, I know they've started doing that with other items.
Was, uh, just described in the staff report, uh, Target is gonna continue to maintain those same security measures with having personnel, same level of personnel, um, as far as, um, just regular staffing surveillance. Um, in terms of response, um, we did route this, uh, project, uh, requested comments from our police department, and they didn't raise any concerns, um, or neither did they mention any, uh, calls for service regarding the specific location. But, uh, maybe the applicant might have some more, uh, details with regards to the security measures and how they, uh, plan to implement that with the new, uh, potential added, uh, alcohol sales.
Sure. We, we do have, um, at the store, um, video surveillance throughout the store. We have, um, uh, security personnel, dedicated security personnel, both Target-uniformed and plainclothes who monitor the store, um, during business hours. Um, and those protocols will continue. We have not experienced, um, in other stores, what, as we've added distilled spirits, have not, um, have not had an experience where we've had to overhaul, um, our protocols because of the addition of distilled spirits. So we don't anticipate that being an issue here, um, as well. And, you know, Target has a very good working relationship with the Southgate Police Department. And so, uh, I think that, uh, if there were issues, Target would be, uh, working with the police department to address them, and certainly could take, um, steps within their own operations if it became necessary, for example, to lock up, uh, certain products. And, you know, Target would have as much interest as, as anybody else in wanting to ensure that these products were handled safely.
Any additional comments from my colleagues? I, I do have a couple of questions. Um, in regards to the type eighty-six license, I know you referenced there was about, I think, twenty-seven or twenty-eight pending licenses in the area. Can you, can you share a little bit more on what cities those are pending?
Sure.
Or are there any Targets in this area, like Huntington Park, Downey?
Yeah. Most of the ones that are pending, in addition to the ones that, uh, Rodrigo mentioned, where the licenses have already issued, are in LA County. If you give me a minute, I can-
Sure. Thank you.
So we have, uh, applications pending, um, in Compton, Gardena, uh, Long Beach, several in the Valley, um, Northridge, Granada Hills, Norwalk, Pomona, San Pedro, West Covina, and then, um, a couple in San Diego County, Riverside County, one in Ventura County. And, and most of these are stores, I mean, stores that are in the process of either they're new stores, and so at the time we are applying for the primary alcohol license, we're now adding the, the type eighty-six application with the original license for new stores. So some of these are new stores. Some of these are stores like Southgate that currently have beer and wine only, and we're upgrading, applying to upgrade the license. And so in conjunction with that, we're also requesting the eighty-six license. So that's part of what has dictated this particular selection of stores. Um, but most of the stores that have already, um, had eighty-six licenses issued, for example, Irvine, Redlands, Rancho Cucamonga, Menifee, those are all stores, um, where we just specifically started adding the eighty-six licenses. And that is, you know, the plan going forward.
And I think you mentioned, none of them are currently active in respect to, they're like in full effect at this point, correct? At any of the other sites?
Well, the licenses are active and fully operable, but Target is not conducting tastings yet.
And in respect to the area that's been, that will be kind of guarded out or, you know, ropes, how do you, uh, what's the process that you have in place to deter underage drinking? Uh, in regards to checking IDs? Are you using a machine? Is it just eyeballing the license? What, what do you have, what do you anticipate will be the, the process on that side?
I can't say specifically, um, since the, the program hasn't been rolled out yet. But certainly, there will be signage, um, saying that, um, no one under twenty-one can come into that area. It will be the responsibility of the person conducting the tasting to ensure that anyone coming into that tasting area is, uh, of, of proper age, is over twenty-one. Now, whether they will have, um, whether they will be manually inspecting IDs or whether there will be some form of, um, electronic checking, I, I can't honestly say.
Yeah, the, the only, that's, I think that's one of my concerns is that, you know, as you're having, in essence, these vendors come in to, you know, promote their products at that point, unless there's some of those processes are in place or requirements for outside vendors, then, um, it's kind of out of your so-called control when it comes to, uh, processing individuals, whether they're, you know, checking IDs and things of that nature. I just think that that is a, uh, a big liability for the store, and in honesty, for, to keep, uh, alcohol out of the hands of underage, uh, individuals.
Well, it's not a situation where Target says, "Okay, come into our store and do your tasting." That, this is a license that Target has, and if there are violations, it's Target that is responsible. So you can be sure that Target is not just going to let somebody come into their store without a plan and without oversight to make sure that the regulations are being adhered to, because Target is the one that will be liable. So it, 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 it's not a situation where you just say, "Come in here and do what you want in our store."
Right.
Target will be working with them to make sure that there are sufficient protocols to-
But as of right now, there aren't protocols in place for that on Target's side.
I, I can't tell you specific, um, protocols, as I said, because they're still working out the, the program. But the, the requirements and the regulations, uh, exist in, in the, uh, in the requirements of the license. So Target will have to come up with protocols that will ensure that they meet those requirements.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that was my, my curiosity when, when thinking back on, on how those requirements would be enforced by the police department. I understand, you know, when it comes to underage drinking, they usually have, like, um, you know, programs with liquor stores, where they'll, they'll send decoys or, or whatever. And so that, that would have been helpful too, to see how something like the, the, that would be enforced in, in... To see if, 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 you know, those, those protocols meet the requirements or, or what, what kind of oversight will, will there be on, on, on the part of the city to make sure that, that things are being adhered to properly? Because I mean, I, I, I do see that there is a, a, a part in the permit that, where it, the permit can be rescinded, right? If there are any violations?
Staff, I have a question. Why wasn't it required for Target to provide us a plan on how they're gonna proceed, like with the tasting and so, and so forth? To give us a better idea, uh, to understand what protocols are gonna take? Um, like our, my colleague just asked, like, "How are they gonna identify underage, uh, you know, uh, customers and so forth?"
Well, part of it is, uh, the, the fact that they were pretty much proposing to continue the same methods of, uh, screening for the typical sales of, for off-sale, um, in terms of screening underage, uh, minors. The fact that they, they still haven't fleshed out their plans for the rollout comprehensively in other stores is another reason why they don't have, uh, specific, like, details on the tasting, kind of like the floor plan of the specific area and whatnot. And, um, the other reason is really the fact that ABC does have these strict requirements that are listed in their advisory, which is a part of the staff report. And, um, so they're, they're pretty clear as to how they, they need to, wha- what they need to abide by. So staff is pretty much recommending compliance with those, um, pretty much regulations.
We've also incorporated a lot of the, the ABC requirements into the conditions of approval, which are attached to the resolution. Uh, in addition to the question about the revocation, if there is a violation there of the conditions of approval, it does give us the authority to revoke the, the permit. That's under condition number seven, where it says, "Violation of or non-compliance with any of these conditions shall constitute grounds for revocation of the permit." So if we get word back from police or, uh, we get notified that there is a violation of the conditional use permit, we can, in effect, revoke the conditional use permit. They would have to stop operating their, uh, either their alcohol sales or the taste testing portion of that, and, um, we would have to address it at that time.
Is, is that something that you've talked to PD about? If, if there are any complaints they receive that they need to relay them to you? Is that something that they typically know to do?
My understanding is we send the referrals out to PD. The police would get those referrals. If there's any, um, issues that they have with a certain use, they can inform us, um, they can let us know how many, um, cases, instances have been, um, you know, submitted for a certain business. We can take that into consideration. Uh, we can bring it back to the Planning Commission for you to consider. And so that is something that, yeah, we would reach out at that time to, with police, to see if they have any concerns with the use.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, just, just a question to staff. In regards to approving this matter, if, is there a way for us to have like some kind of stipulation that ensures that we're able to at least get an idea of what that plan is after? They plan to go into effect, like literally actually start the program, the tasting? Uh, just so that there's some closure to some of the questions that, you know, are, are... Some of the questions that my colleagues have and potential concerns. I, I, I assume Target will follow best practices around that. I just think for transparency reasons and just closure, I think it is important to at least have something there that could potentially be, uh...
Well, if I could speak to that, condition number nineteen is, is a condition that is in all of the, uh, liquor license permits that you issue, which calls for a periodic review, the first one to be six months from now. Um, by that point, Target will probably have its, uh, its program in place, and they can then, uh, explain to you how they attempt to do this and, and hopefully satisfy your concerns at that time.
Thank you. That's why, that's why you're here, right? To make sure we stay on point. I appreciate you.
I, I just stole John's thunder. He could have read that, uh, condition as easily as I could.
Thank you very much. So on that note, uh, next steps? Yes? Do I get a motion?
I move to approve the approval of conditional use permit. CUP twenty-four seventy-four.
I second.
Broke?
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Prieto?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Laborin?
Yes.
Chairperson Ozaeta?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Uh, so over and up, I think, to audience, audience comments? Any additional comments by the audience? No? No, uh, city staff comments? Planning Commission?
Yes, I'm sorry, sure.
Okay, I'm just keeping going here, I'm just keeping it going.
And I just wanted to introduce myself. I know I, I spoke into some of you over the phone, and, um, you know, this is my, really my first meeting here. I was at the last meeting as well. But it's a pleasure to be here, um, staffing, um, the Planning Commission and to be here, uh, for the first time with this, with this project. Uh, a few things I wanted to, to mention. I received a couple of, uh, emails from the commissioners about, um, the paychecks, and I wanted the, the commission to know that the paychecks are on the warrant register for City Council. That's going on December tenth. Um, usually checks are mailed the following day, so expect the checks to be in the mail, um, around the end of next week. Also, I wanted to let you know that we are a growing staff over here. We hired another associate planner, it started yesterday. His name is Joshua Valdez, and he was actually a contract planner that was here several months ago. So he's coming back on board. He's familiar with the city of Southgate. He's from Inner West Consulting Group, and he reported last to the city of San Dimas. But again, he has been here before. He's been here for over a year, actually, and he's actually, um, getting up to speed pretty quickly. He's only been here for two days, but he is familiar with a, a lot of our requirements. So, um, we are a staff that is growing. Um, with that, we lost our other contract planner, whose last day was last, um, last week, last Wednesday, and I know that she's presented many times to the commission. But we are looking forward to being able to provide for the community and move forward and be able to serve this community, um, in, in that fashion, with a, a full staff now. The other thing I want to mention is to just make sure for this meeting to adjourn to Thursday, December fifth, because we do have one item for that, which is a SOFI, uh, SOFI project. Um, I also wanted to mention that there is an event going on outside of City Hall, which is the Winter Wonderland Event, going on from four PM to eight PM that same day. So parking is gonna be really tight. We've reserved parking down below in the basement. And so, uh, when you come to the meeting on Thursday, make sure that you, uh, you park in the basement. California will be closed off for- California will be closed off for the Winter Wonderland event. So in order to make it to the basement, you'd have to use Dr. Glanty Seberg Way, the San Antonio Avenue over to the east in order to be able to go to the parking garage. We will have an attendant there to let you in through the gate. So that should happen around 6:15, and that's all.
Thank you. Colleagues, any comments?
No, I just want to say that I'm thankful for you hitting the road running. I know that you just started, but I'm really happy that you've been reaching out to us and really checking with us about the meetings. That's something that's very helpful in cutting time too with the, during the meetings. So thanks.
Thank you.
I also want to reiterate that, John. Thank you so much for helping with the email. I hadn't had any email access for like six months, and today I got IT to help me, and I'm back.
I'm glad, I'm glad they were able to help.
Well, welcome, John. It was a pleasure speaking to you, and just like my colleagues, we're very grateful that you have taken the time to reach out to us and get to know us and explain to us everything that's happening. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your commitment to our city. For, yeah, so thank you, everyone, for making that happen. I do want to respect requests from my colleagues. Last meeting, there were a couple requests for reports. I know in the middle of a transition, it's tough to get a department report. So, you know, I want to make sure out of transparency for our community and for, out of respect for our colleagues, that we'd like to see a kind of a end-of-year recap sometime in January, given the transition. We understand that that's challenging, as you are kind of working on getting a full team, a full roster, as well as, there was also, one of my colleagues did request some clarity and transparency around why the agenda item that was pushed back to the 5th wasn't able to, kind of why we weren't able to proceed with that at the last agenda meeting. So if we can get clarity on that for our next meeting, that would be greatly appreciated. You know, one of the things that we've always harp on is making sure that we lead with transparency. I think our community deserves that. I think our commissioners really appreciate that. And the more transparent we are as a city, I think there's a direct correlation with the more civic engagement we'll see in our community. So I just want to make sure I put that out there, out of respect for my colleagues and their requests, but also because I know there's so much work ahead of us as we kind of venture, venture into 2025.
Thank you for bringing that up. Rob already did clarify, and because of everything that's going on, the changes that are happening right now, they are going to prepare that for the beginning, sometime in the beginning of the year, as soon as they catch up to everything. And then due to the holidays, we're kind of short on, you know, this month on days. So I do thank you, Rob, for stepping in as well and communicating on the request that I had made. And it will be, the report will be done, hopefully, maybe January, February, or something like that, so it could give staff the time to catch up on everything else that was going on. And then obviously with the shortness of December with the holidays, so we'll have that out for the community.
Rob, you were going to say a few words?
Thank you, Chair. Just to help clarify one of the questions and try and knock it out right now versus deferring to a later time, just to help clarify on the mix-up on the posting for last planning commission that causes delay. Essentially, we had some ongoing negotiations with the SOFI client with staff in trying to work through an acceptable compromise on conditions so that we didn't come, I think it's always best where possible to not come to a commission meeting with competing interests, you know, staff recommending something, the client, or the property owner, in this case, the Leesee, recommending a different set of conditions, and then, you know, kind of laying it all in front of the commission's feet with sort of an uncertain future. So we were working on that, and it kind of got to the midnight hour as far as nailing, getting that all agreed to. And that led to a very late notice that came from our planning department over to our clerk's office for posting, and with some, the flurry that came sort of at the end of our cutoff time, it was missed getting posted in time, and lo and behold, we had to cancel. So human error, you know, we can work on communication better. It's not typical, we get to the last minute when we're working on this, but I think we have some good partners at SOFI and some good people on staff, and there was some maybe poor communication in the past, we cleaned it up, and we think what's coming on Thursday is, you know, at least a recommended set of conditions that certainly you can decide what to do with, but it's united even if we are about 10 days behind what we were hoping for.
Just for, I guess this is your world we're just visiting. In regards to posting, what is the turnaround time in regards to those type of requests? How long in advance does that have to go into the city clerk's office?
Typically, they're, they try to be very responsive, so if they have a cutoff, typically, say for a Tuesday meeting, it'll be Thursday, that's our last open day at City Hall, as we're closed Fridays. So, you know, by the end of the business day, they have to have posted Thursday, so that would, you know, we close at 6:00, but typically by 4:00 PM, they like to post. If we're getting things to them and letting them know it's coming late, and we get it to them by, you know, 3:30 even at the latest, once in a while, they're very flexible, I think, just, you know, and that's sort of the timeframe, but without the communication being tight, we pass by that day, end of day, and then miss the cutoff, so...
What is for that, I'm just, because I know that was a not-too-typical kind of posting request, right? How many days in advance is that required?
72 hours. So if we were open Friday, then you could do it Friday, but it wasn't noticed until Monday, or actually, I think, I wasn't directly involved at that point, so I think it was even not seen until Tuesday, that it hadn't been posted, and there was an assumption made. So, but typically 72 hours for a regular meeting, and then a special meeting like we're having Thursday is 24 hours. So we posted the Thursday one plenty early. We could actually post it as late as tomorrow for Thursday, but it's already posted for Thursday this time.
And to add to that, Mr. Houston's correct, there is a notification, there is a posting requirement for the agenda to be posted on time. There's also a posting requirement for the public hearings to be posted as well for the individual projects. So that is 10 days, that it has to be mailed to residents within a thousand feet, actually owners and occupants within a thousand feet, and it also has to be published in a newspaper. Usually that happens that you need another day or two to be able to post it on the, in the newspaper properly, so they can publish it on time. So that kind of pushes you back even further.
So thanks for clarifying, yes. So there's two different noticing requirements. I was only talking about the public meeting agenda. John's clarified, there's two sets. That is actually part of why we couldn't combine that effort on tonight, and because the 10 days couldn't get finished to make Tuesday for this item, which pushed it to Thursday, and then they had already noticed the Target item before that cancellation. So it was stuck for Tuesday, which left us with two set dates because of the 10-day noticing. So to make things clear, we may have made it muddier, but that's an attempt to explain what happened.
Yeah, no, that's great. I greatly appreciate that. I mean, clearly, you know, the world that we live in, you know, we're not perfect, you know, there's oversights. Ultimately, we just want to learn from them so that these don't happen again in the future. And the best way to do it is acknowledging where that, you know, where that fell short, whether that communication happened, or just there was an oversight in, you know, reading an email. If that's the case, as long as we can make sure that that gets timed up, I think that would be greatly appreciated, just out of respect for our community and our commissioners. So thank you, I appreciate your...
I fully agree. We will work on that, and I also recommend, because of the mix-up and the exhausting week we have here with two meetings, that everybody should take the rest of the month off. Does that sound okay?
Thank you. On that note, any other comments, colleagues? We're good. Well, we'll go ahead and close the meeting. Is that right? Excuse me? Yeah, we already opened it up, yeah. So we'll go, yeah, happy holidays. Thank you, everyone, for your commitment to our city. Thank you, colleagues, for your engagement, and I'm glad you got here safe. So we appreciate you. So we'll go and close the meeting at 7:28. Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thanks.